Hello, everyone. 6.0, we convene in open session. The stage will dismiss by 30 p.m. 6.1, call to order. The Board of Trustees are hereby convening in open session at 5:30 p.m. 6.2, the roll call. The Board of Trustees, which has been trustees to identify themselves by first and last name, conformly established form. Janne Riddland, Area 2. Cindy Barner, Area 3.
Jordan Zarate, Trustee Area 5. Ryan Springs, Area 3, reevaluate.
Bill Melinger, Trustee Area 1.
Now, we go into my trustee area of course. Okay, 6.3, pledge allegiance, led pride. Let me see here. Phil Benito, before you sit down, can you give us some pledges?
I just turned off my phone. And so your hearts, they begin.
I pledge allegiance, blood pride, allegiance, faith, and service. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay. We convened at 4 o'clock. We added to the item 6.4. We have the opportunity for the California Department of Public Health to address us through Zoom. And so they will be giving us at least a half hour with opportunity if time allows. Four questions and answers. And so the CBTH will be here with us through Zoom to discuss the mask mandate. So it's fantastic opportunity for them to explain. So without further ado, I would like to say 6.4, presentation by Dr. Soho Su from the California Department of Public Health. CBTH, time for questions and answers. Let's all welcome Dr. Soho Su to our meeting.
Great. Hi, everyone. I'll just note, logistically, I'm getting a little bit of feedback from the boardroom. So I can't hear you too well. But let me know if that becomes any issues during the question and answer period. All right. But I'll start by saying hi. It's a real treat to be here. My name is Soho Su. I am a pediatrician and I work for the Safe Schools for All team within the California State Government. And I'll describe that a little bit further. But first, I'll just say, I grew up not too far away from you. I grew up in the San Gabriel Valley, went to public high schools in Glendora. Believe I visited Rim of the World a few times for wrestling tournaments, as I recall, and been to Big Bear many times. So it's a real pleasure here to support you and to see what we can do to help schools start up the year safe and successfully. I also think it's important for you to know who you're talking to. So in addition to that, I'll let you know, I'm a father. I've got a girl who spent last year in virtual kindergarten. And now she's two days into in-person first grade and loving it. And so really appreciate all the work that's going around across the state to make that happen. And as I mentioned, I'm a hospital-based pediatrician half the time. So I've seen COVID and I've seen the effects of lockdowns in children from that vantage point as well. And I'll touch upon that throughout the.
Dr. Su, if you could, I just had a number of people who just entered the room. So if I could please ask everyone, is what Dr. Su is discussing, it is a requirement for anybody on public, inside public school or on the buildings to be wearing a mask. So please, everybody could wear a mask. And for those of you who missed the introduction, Dr. Su is with the California Department of Public Health of Sacramento. He is tuning in at this to discuss the mandate. And you will have the opportunity, if time allows, for questions and answers. So you'll be able to address it directly if we do have the time to after he's done speaking. But please, everyone, if you could, please wear masks if it could be a compromise. Thank you. Please go ahead, Dr. Su.
Sure, perfect. Yeah. And so with that as context, I want to spend some time today. And first of all, thank you to Superintendent Murphy and to the school board for inviting us to be here. It's again, our pleasure to see what we can do to help support all of the schools really throughout the state in reopening safely and successfully. First, I'll start with a little bit of background around what we do. So I'm part of what we call the Safe Schools for All Initiative, which is really an inter-agency group within the California State Government that comprises folks from the California Department of Public Health, such as myself, and folks from the education sectors too, to work together to, you know, figure out the best ways forward. And specifically what that means is we provide some of the guidance around safety measures for classrooms. We also know that it takes more than guidance for schools to open successfully. It takes, it takes stuff. And so we help support funding in many different ways and mechanisms, including supporting testing and school-based vaccination efforts, sometimes with personnel and end-to-end support. So a lot of the work that we do is helping to push out some of those safety measures that are really important. And then we also provide hands-on assistance. And so we have, we have ways for local health officials and for educational officials to contact us with questions as they're, as they're trying to find the best path forward. We do all this with transparency and accountability at the heart and really equity being the core. We're called Safe Schools for All because that's really what we mean. It's just not just about a select few in California being able to return in-person instruction. It's about all in the state having that opportunity. And we partner locally. So this is one example of it. But we really want to work closely with school boards and school districts throughout the state, as well as local public health officials too. And so I think I want to start with just some background of where we are now in this phase of the pandemic. And I'll mention that we know a whole lot more than we did 17, 18 months ago in March of 2020. At that point, as I'm sure you all experienced, schools, preschools, everything was being shut down. And the reason it was being shut down is because of our experiences with other viruses, like influenza, the flu, or with RSV, another pretty common virus. We know that kids get it. We know that kids spread it. And we know that kids get sick from it. And so that's, that's where we started with this entire process. And fortunately, that has not borne out as severe as we thought it would with children. Certainly, it's been devastating in many other respects. But that is, that is one of the things we've learned as time has gone on. And so we're pushing this year a little bit different than last year. The other thing we've learned is really the costs of closing down schools, the substantial learning losses, the ways that exacerbated inequities as time has gone on, and really the social and emotional consequences of it all too. You know, I'll give you some examples from, from my own time. You know, I've seen kids in the hospital with pain so bad that they've needed IV fluids and IV pain medications and scans, only, only to really find the underlying cause is anxiety and the stresses of disruptions to their social and emotional networks. I've seen kids that even take an overdose on various illicit substances, including marijuana, to the point that they've had uncontrollable vomiting and needed, needed support for their heart, some really serious issues. And so, you know, there's, there are very serious harms with school closure. This is some of the data that the CDC published in what they call their morbidity and mortality weekly report over the last school year. And basically, kids that were not in in-person school consistently, they got less exercise, they spent less time outside, they spent less time in person with friends.
Can you speak up just a bit?
Yeah, absolutely. Can you hear me better now? I'm sorry, was that "not at all"?
We're having a lot of good quality hearing.
Sounds like trying to.
Okay. What, what I can try to do is connect just from the computer audio. Usually my phone is actually more reliable, but give me one second, I'll switch to that. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, so, so, so sorry about that. I think if it's all right for the purposes of time, I'll keep going. But I'm happy to, you know, address some questions of things you might not have heard before too. But what I was just kind of harping on is the harms of school. You know, we've seen it in many different respects as time has gone on. And, and the points I was just bringing up is, this is a study that was done, basically surveys that were done of parents and kids and published by the CDC. And we found that when kids weren't in in-person school, they got less exercise, they spent less time outside, and they spent less time with their friends. And likely as a result of all that, their mental and emotional health worsened over the course of that period. Talking more anxiety, more depression, really, really troubling things. And, and we know that, that when schools are closed, it's not just the kids that are impacted, it's the parents too. And, you know, over the school year, we saw parents whose children were in, were not in in-person school. They lost their jobs. They had trouble just maintaining their jobs in some situations. Increased emotional distress, increased anxiety, difficulty sleeping. And, you know, this one really gets at me a little bit or breaks my heart a little bit. This is a, some surveys and studies that were done around teen suicides, ages 11 to 21. And this is a chart of two years in time. So the gray bars are 2020 and the black bars are 2020. And in February and March of 2020, as you all recall, that's when the pandemic started to take off. And you can see that in 2020, really peaking and starting in March, for every month, there were more suicide attempts this past year when schools were closed than in the prior year. And so all of this is really just to mention that there are real harms associated with school closure. And that's why we really need to approach this year, seeing, doing all that we can to make schools a safe and successful place to spend some time in. So I'll transition now, talking a little bit about what we've learned about the science of COVID-19 and, and the virus that spreads it. And these are the three main points I really want, want you all to walk away with. Number one, children get COVID less often and are less ill than adults. And we'll go through these in a little bit more detail in a minute. Number two, when they do get it, which again is less often, they get it typically from their household, even when they're attending school. And number three is that schools can operate safely and successfully when we've got the key safety measures in place. And so let's go through these a little bit more. So why do kids get COVID-19 less frequently with less severe disease? And the main point here, and you don't have to remember the name ACE2 receptor, but the main point here is for the virus to actually impact you and make you sick, it needs to find a way to latch on to something in your body. It needs to basically find a door that it can get into and then push that door open. And that door is called the ACE2 receptor. And it turns out that kids have less of this than adults. And that starts to change right around puberty. And that's why, you know, we start to see rates seeming to increase around middle and high school. But that is one of the reasons that kids happen to get this disease less frequently than adults. Number two, as I mentioned, even when they're in school, kids tend to get COVID from a household contact. This has been shown consistently in studies around the world. And it is still the case as we approach the Delta variant too. And it just makes sense. You know, you spend a lot of time unmasked in close contact. And so that's, that's where the majority of transmission and infections are going to occur. And the real takeaway point, the reason I'm mentioning this too, is for us to think about what are the best ways we can protect our kids. It really is also about protecting ourselves. And so this is where we talk about vaccines, vaccines, and vaccines. The more communities vaccinate the adults and parents in the household, the more prevention and safety they'll be there for kids. And then number three is that schools can really operate safely and successfully when we've got the key safety measures in place. And so there's many studies to show this overall, but I'll just highlight this particular one, which was a large study done across multiple schools in Wisconsin. And this was over the last school year. And so at the bottom of the chart, you'll see the dates from, or late August to right around Thanksgiving. And the Y-axis going up and down are the numbers. And so the, the black line you'll see is over that period of time, cases in that community rose substantially. You know, we're talking tenfold increases here over the course of that period of time. And yet, while that happened, COVID in the school did not seem to increase as much proportionately. It didn't increase as much. And that's again, likely in some part because kids just don't get the disease as much. And then the final line, which you can barely see, it's the dotted blue line that really just tracks along the box itself too, is the number of cases that were transmitted because of school. And so really, in the entire study, and this was, I think, about 44,000 or so children in total, seven seemed to have gotten it because of an in-school transmission. And so all of this is to say, when there is masking in place, when there are good safety and mitigation measures in place, schools are safer than the community. They're, they're, they're a really good place to be. So, you know, the flip side of all this is then if kids don't get it very much, if kids don't get sick very much, why do we care, right? Why, why do we pay attention to children as this disease is going on? And I'll tell you, that landscape is changing dramatically over the course of the past few months. And so here in California, the children with COVID-19 is increasing. The number of children hospitalized with COVID-19 is increasing. And the number of children in intensive care with COVID-19 is increasing. Those are certainly concerning trends. But I'll also note that while all that is happening, that that total number remains low, particularly when compared to unvaccinated adults. And so, you know, the state is working heavily on tracking these numbers and is paying close attention. And so far, those numbers remain low. I'll also note though, that that's not necessarily the case throughout the country right now. I've got colleagues in the South who are experiencing something very different when it comes to COVID-19 in children now. You know, I can, I can read a few quotes to you, but, but some have said, "We are drowning in the pandemic in central Florida. Our obese teens are behaving very much like adults with Delta virus, with the Delta strain." We are seeing daily admissions now of adult-type COVID lung disease now. We're dealing with a different disease pattern than we were last year, especially in kids with one or more risk factors. And so those are all very concerning things we're hearing from around the country, particularly in areas where vaccination rates are low and there's a lack of mask mandates. And I'll give you another example. In Arkansas, for example, maybe just about two weeks or so ago, the state reversed course. So, so prior, the governor had basically implemented a ban on masking mandates. So said that schools could not require everyone to wear a mask in, in their school. And then Arkansas Children's Hospital started to fill up. And they started to have more sick children in that space. And so since that, they have reversed their decision and are now permitting such, such mask mandates to occur. So we're dealing with a very different situation now. And that's, as I mentioned before, because of this Delta variant. So it is, it is well-known that it is far more contagious. But I'll also just, you know, reiterate that it's really, the majority of patients in California that are hospitalized are adults overwhelmingly unvaccinated adults. The, for, for better or worse, what is also the case is that the variant is transmitted the same way as other variants of the virus. It has to leave your nose and mouth, get into the air, and infect someone else's nose or mouth that's susceptible. And, and the really good thing about all this is the vaccines are still holding up. They are very effective at both preventing severe illness and mitigating against spread of the Delta variant. But it is important to be fully vaccinated. And so two doses of the vaccine at minimum are important for, for protection of the Delta variant. And by two doses, I mean of the mRNA vaccines. And, and the other piece is that masks remain effective. Like I said, the way the transmission is, is a similar route to what we've always known for respiratory viruses. So that's an important piece going forward too. And so as we look ahead to this 21, 22 school year, we're thinking about it with two guardrails in mind as we go forward. And I've touched upon those, you know, in the prior part of this talk. But number one is we want to make sure that the virus doesn't spread and cause more disease in children and their families. So we want to make sure we have something in place to prevent that from happening. And on the other side, we really want to make sure the kids remain in school. And so that kids and their families don't suffer the same consequences that we had last year. And so that's that middle ground, that middle approach we're trying to approach here, which is essentially that all students really must have access to safe and full in-person instruction and to as much instructional time as possible. And let's talk about the way that we can do that. So, so to start with, this is the way the virus transmits as it relates to schools. And, and you all know this, but I'll just reiterate that schools are not islands, right? So what happens in the community impacts what happens in the school. And so number one really is the virus needs to be in the community. And then from the community, it needs to show up on somebody who's going to enter the school space, whether that's a teacher, a student, a custodian, it needs to enter the school. And then from there, it needs to be transmitted within that school space and then work its way back out. So that's how transmission would occur in total. And, and this is our approach to layering ways to safeguard against that process from happening. So number one is we have to decrease the amount of virus in the community. And that's really where we really emphasize vaccines. The more everyone gets vaccinated, the less virus there is in the community. And number two, to prevent virus from entering the school, it takes a few things. So it takes testing. That's, that's one way to really reiterate and reassure ourselves that, 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 that there's, you know, individuals who do not have the virus as they're entering the school. And the second piece is we need to think differently about symptoms and illnesses than we had in the past. This is not the year to ignore a fever. This is not the year to ignore any symptoms that may be concerning for respiratory illness. And so with extra caution, we need to spend some extra caution in terms of staying home when we're feeling sick. That goes to students and that goes to teachers and everybody in that school space. And then in the school space, this is where masks are key. They really, really help mitigate against transmission in that space, as does ensuring that the air that everyone is breathing is clean. And so that's where ventilation is another important component of that. And then finally, the way to prevent, you know, anybody who, who happens to get the virus from transmitting to others is to ensure vaccines at the other end as well. And so really what we want to emphasize is a layered approach here. It's not one, I'm going to solve all this, I'm going to keep us all safe. It's a number of things. Disproportionately, vaccines are the best tool we have. But, but as you all know, there's many who cannot be vaccinated at this point, including everyone under the age of 12. And so that's why we have to think about these other measures too. And with regard to vaccines, these are the state numbers overall of where we currently are at. So I'll highlight, you know, this is going from January to August or so. And I'll highlight a few things. Number one is in that blue area, that's the 12 to 17-year-olds in the state. And so about less than half are currently fully vaccinated. And I just looked up the numbers in San Bernardino, and I believe it's 30% in San Bernardino. So it's one out of three roughly of the teenagers are fully vaccinated at this point in time. And the other thing I'll point out is that all of those curves are starting to flatten out. And that's a little bit concerning. We need to keep the efforts up. We need to keep pushing to make sure vaccines continue to promulgate their way through the community to keep everyone safe. And then I'll touch a little bit more on masks. So as I mentioned before, there's multiple studies to show their effectiveness. And the studies actually directions. So there are studies such as the Wisconsin one that I showed that show that they are effective at mitigating against transmission. And then there are also studies that show that when masks are not worn, that is where the virus spreads in schools. There's, you know, a situation in Israel that's, that's highly reported. I believe there was a heat wave, they turned off the AC, and they said, no one has to mask during this period of time. And that's where you just saw this, this sudden uptick in the amount of spread of the virus in that community. And there's, there's plenty of other stories there too. So that's a little bit about the, the effectiveness of it. On the safety front, you know, we've been now close to 18 months into extensive mask-wearing in many communities. And I've, I've yet to see a child walk through, you know, my, my hospital's doors with adverse impacts of, of the mask. So I'll start with there, but there's no real definitive proof of a really significant disease. That's not to say that they're not always comfortable. I'll be the first to acknowledge that. You know, I have to remind my six-year-old to cover her nose with the mask. And so I fully acknowledge that they're not, they're not my favorite thing in the world, but, but they save lives, undoubtedly so. Masks are also, particularly in schools, they are recommended by basically all of the major authorities and national scientific experts. And by that, I'm referring to the CDC, as well as to the American Academy of Pediatrics, who really think about children and their well-being and their social and emotional development and their growth and all those factors. And considering all of those, still believe masks are the right things to wear in a, in a K through 12 setting. And because of all this, because masks are really so effective and so powerful, this year, we're approaching quarantine a little bit differently than, than we did in prior years. And so at least from a state's perspective, in, if there's an exposure that occurs on school campus, supervised by school staff, and both the student who's exposed and the individual with, with COVID-19 were masked at the same time, then that student doesn't necessarily need to quarantine from all activities. They can remain in school for in-person instruction. They shouldn't do sports and extracurriculars during that time. But it's, it's, the, the data and the evidence seems to show it's, it's safe enough to continue being in school despite being exposed, so long as a mask was being worn and so long as you don't have symptoms. And, you know, I'll wrap basically here and then open it up to questions. But I just, to reiterate, you know, the, from, from California Department of Public Health really aligns with the guidance that's being recommended by all the federal and national authorities. The priority is full in-person learning. We really have to do our best to see what we can do to avoid a situation of, of the virtual learning environment. I'm sure many of you out there have experienced many issues with regard to that. And it's going to take layers. It's going to take time for more and more people to get vaccinated. And during that interim, masks, ventilation, thinking about hand hygiene, staying home when sick, and testing are all really, really important components of it. And so our guidance for this year involves masks being required in indoor settings for all students and all adults in that setting when they're indoors with students. And then outdoors, because of the decreased risk of transmission in an outdoor setting, masks are optional in that space. So, you know, I'm hoping that this is helpful in terms of giving you some rationale of, of, you know, where, where the state has landed in terms of its guidance. And I'll also add, we, we are very committed to revisiting it as time goes on. I think we've set November 1st as a deadline to reconsider and to revisit it. And that's because this is an evolving space. Certainly, I think we were all very concerningly surprised by the situations that are happening in the southern part of the United States right now. And we want to do our best to make sure that California schools remain safe and remain open. So I will leave it at that and then open up to questions. And sorry, one other thing I'll mention is I forgot to introduce one of my colleagues. Dr. Erica Pan is also on the call. And so she may jump in with some questions, with, with some responses from time to time.
Thank you, Dr. Su. I'm going to first, we're tied on time. So, you know, I'll give you a half hour. So I'm going to see if you have any questions from any of the board members at this time.
Dr. Su, you said that this mask mandate is being reviewed. How often is this mask mandate being reviewed? Thank you for joining us tonight.
Oh, of course, my pleasure. In terms of it being reviewed, so I suppose I would phrase it this way is we are, as schools are reopening right now, we are continuing to monitor that data on a daily basis and seeing, you know, what the trends and what the situations are looking like. And we're doing that within the state, but also looking at some of the trends that are occurring in places where masks are not mandated and understanding transmission trends there. So, you know, looking at the numbers, looking at, hearing the stories every day. There's no plan to specifically make decisions, you know, every day. But, but we've set November 1st as a, as a last date, or as a date to definitively kind of check back in and let, let folks know with, with any updates, should there, should there be any.
And, Dr., you reviewing that data based on areas as well, like localities? Is it different, like in a rural community, for example?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of parsing out the data in many different respects. So within different regions or urban and rural spaces, all of that. I would say one of, one of the key factors that actually seems to be influencing things a little bit is vaccination status in particular communities. So that's. So that's, that's another component that goes into, into how we're considering it and weighing all these factors.
Thank you.
So I do have a question as well. In the last year, and with state orders, it was really alarming to see what was happening with mental health in our youth. And I'm wondering if there is any studies, any evaluation of what is happening as far as mental health, especially emotional learning in terms of mask wearing.
I, yeah, thank you for raising that, just so I understand the question is, is, is the question, are there any studies about the mental and emotional health of, of, of what happened last year? Is that right?
Asking about safety of homes was devastating for students. What about for students being on campus and the mask mandate in terms of it being scary or upsetting or treating an unhealthy mental environment for them?
That the masks themselves were creating an unhealthy environment in the school space? Is that right?
Correct. Is there any data related to that?
Yeah, no, not that I've come across that, that have really suggested that, that wearing a mask in a school space has created a access anxiety. I mean, I, I, I will say that it's, it's tough to parse things out that definitively and that, that concretely because it's been such an emotional rocky year for everybody.
I'm sorry, Dr. Sue, I was addressing some comments from the audience. We need to make sure that we're all treating each other with respect. Even if we disagree, we need to be able to make sure we all have a chance to speak up. And if you disagree, that's okay. But I do want to hear what he asked us to say.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's been just such a rough, rocky year for everybody, including, you know, those at school. And so, you know, there, there hasn't been any particular data that, that I've come across to suggest that wearing masks has, population-wise, caused some undue distress. And so, so no, I'm, I'm not aware of any particular studies that have suggested that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Yes. Fair, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate you joining us and thank you for your presentation. We really appreciate it.
Of course, my pleasure. You know, I think forward, it's gonna take all of us working together to get through this. So really appreciate the opportunity to be here and to address questions from, from all of you and, and your audience. All right, take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on from our agenda, 7.0, closed session report. 7.1, announcement of, of reportable actions taken during closed session. None. 8.0, action calendar. 8.1, superintendent approval to have Zachary Lawrence serve as student board representative 2021, 2022 school year. This goal impact none. Senator Simon, Cindy moved. And Natalie second, any discussion? Welcome, Zachary. We're excited to have you. Would call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All of those. Motion passes unanimously. 9.0, introducing my most, if you might, to share at this point is the public comment period. I've got a lot to read right here. Should you guys take care of them? Um, okay. 9.1, public comment period for items listed on this agenda and on agenda items within subject matter jurisdiction of the governing board. The public comment period is administered by state law. It is the appointment of meetings that decide for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. They will not take action on non-agenda issues raised at the public comment period. The board, for example, may refer any matter to superintendent for review or take action to direct staff to place the matter of business on a future agenda. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items in person should have completed a green speakers form and submitted it to the executive secretary to the superintendent before the meeting was called to order. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items by submitting a written statement to be allowed should have submitted an email to the executive secretary to the superintendent by noon today. All written comments and individual speakers are limited to five minutes per item. The board limits the total length of time for items within the same subject to 20 minutes. Speakers who have complaints against board members or staff are encouraged to seek resolution to those complaints by using the Rim of the World Unified School District Written Complaint, Written Complaint Procedure rather than orally addressing a matter of meeting. The board will not respond to such complaints until the applicable complaint procedure, BP AR 1312 dot one, has been followed and has reached the board level. Where a complaint concerns district employee, either file writing, physician, or other facts, the board cannot respond until proper written notice has been given to the employee pursuant to Government Code Section 54957. The court, the governing board is interested in the ideas and the opinions of all stakeholders and endeavors to incorporate community views into its deliberations and decisions. At the same time, it must be able to conduct its business in an organized and efficient manner, free from material disruption. Therefore, according to Board Hy Law 9323, Government Code Section 54957 dot nine, audience members may not disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede your conduct of this meeting. Open meeting laws do not confer any privilege or protection for expression beyond that otherwise provided by law. The public's understanding and cooperation are appreciated. So 9.2, public comments. We do have, we do have seven, I've got two emails, five green sheets. So we have seven public comments all on the same topic, masks. And so as I just mentioned a few months ago, they are limited to 20 minutes per subject. Normally it would be a limit of five minutes per speaker. So instead, it would happen to be 20 minutes with seven speakers. We'll go ahead and extend it to 21 minutes and allow there to be three minutes per speaker. Take a vote. Okay, so can I, can I actually have somebody entertain a motion to do that?
Well, before I make that, so we know that there are not, there are not more than seven speakers to explain their papers?
By the time that we started the meeting, that was the deadline by board policy as far as having speakers. So.
Well, I need to extend the time.
Extend the time? So our seven speakers extending the time to 21 minutes? With three minutes for speaker? Is that what you're saying or?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Second. Okay, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
All of those. Motion passes unanimously. So we will have a time limit of three minutes per speaker. And then also I have, I'm gonna go ahead and read this as well. So as a board, we believe it's incredibly important that all voices in our community should have an opportunity to be heard. During the public comment portion of our agenda, we will be listening. But because of open meeting laws, we cannot engage in discussions with speakers on items on a listed agenda. We know that issues surrounding school safety are controversial, but I would like to remind everyone that we must maintain civility, respect, and awareness of public media. We know that everyone present is focused on what is best for our students and staff. However, there may be differing views on what is best. Let us make it our goal to disagree if we have to, but not be disagreeable in the process. Let me also remind the audience that school districts are required to comply with the state's mandate. The masks to be worn inside schools when students are present. Our highest goal is to keep the opportunity to have students armed to our students in their classrooms with their teachers and their friends and to continue this year with as much normalcy as we safely can. At this time, mask wearing is mandated by the state and it is considered by policymakers at the state levels to be the best way to curtail the spread of the virus. We need your understanding, patience, and support as we work together to maintain a safe learning and teaching environment for everyone. So now I'd like to go ahead and move on to 9.2, public comments. It said we do have seven. I grabbed them. First, hoping I can actually write, Jenny Keely. She's speaking, speaking on behalf of the kids. And our topic is mask choice. We have a podium set right here to meet you, but the, um, willing to come on up here and have a drink. Pardon? I'm sorry, we already have this order established.
Jenny pushed the button on that mic, so it turns red.
My name is Jenny Kylie. I'm a former 12, K through 12th grade grad graduate. I'm the daughter of a 35-year-retired and well-known respected teacher in this district. I'm here tonight with many other concerned parents. We are demanding this elected, elected school board do what's right for the children in regards to mask choice. Apparently, a meeting has already taken place behind closed doors, discussed that this board will not give us the parents a choice to not mask our children. We have, under the Constitution and civil and individual rights, allowed parents, not teachers, unions, or school boards to decide what is best for our children. These decisions should be put in the hands of us, parents, not you. I'm completely disappointed with the current board. You were elected to represent us, parents, and our children. The school board is entrusted with governing a community's public schools. The role of the school board is to ensure that the school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of this community. It states on the Rim of the World Unified School Board website, goal number four, state, well-maintained, secure facilities. All students, educational partners are provided a high-quality physical environment where they enjoy safe, respected, positive connections and experiences. Forcing kids to wear a mask all day is a health hazard. It's not accomplishing anything at all. These cloth masks that kids are wearing are 2% effective in stopping particles. Why is it that you can make a decision when you have not heard from the community? You are a board of education, you are not a medical board. You were elected by the people of this community and you need to let our voices be heard. We do not want to mask our children. We do not want to mask our children. Our children are not vaccinated. I would suggest this board really think what is in the best interest of these students. I want a board who is going to support our civil rights, our individual rights. All we are asking for is a simple choice. Thank you for your time.
I'm gonna go ahead and read an email I saved. And we go ahead and read this as it is, this is from Half May's News. Good evening. I appreciate, I appreciate this opportunity to address the board around the issue of COVID safety in our schools. I am a mother of a 13-year-old who is attending Mary Beth Hank Intermedia as an eighth grade student. We are living in an unprecedented time with a pandemic that is now well into the second half of its second year. As things are occurring, we should expect that it will go up this third year. Many things are affecting the impact of COVID-19 on our society and on our kids. This is a virus that has gone through many mutations which has made it more easy to transmit. As we saw when the COVID outbreak in our country began in March 2020, there's been exponential rise in cases followed by hospitalizations, followed by long COVID or permanent complications and death. We are fortunate to live in a time when the technology exists to develop a vaccine to this R H virus without medical treatments that are effective and reduce the duration and impact. The positive news is that the death rate from this illness is decreasing. However, one of the concerns is that more people have immunity to this virus that are older, likely because they have had a vaccine. The virus will take out those who have not been vaccinated. The largest unvaccinated group is pointed to children zero to 11 years old. Although the rate of severe illness and hospitalization for this age group has been low, news reports indicate that higher amount of children are becoming very sick of COVID and consequently needing to be hospitalized. Another significant concern is that people that are not vaccinated, as well as those who are vaccinated, are trying to transmit this virus safely without symptoms. Every one of us can unwittingly pass this virus on to someone who is immune and compromised for whom for medical reasons cannot get a vaccine. Studies have shown, even if they are not a perfect barrier, that any base fabric can prevent the transmission of saliva or nasal fluid that carry the virus. If two people are wearing a mask, the risk of transmission is greatly reduced. This can then be combined with other risk reduction strategies such as frequent hand washing and sanitizing and the line for social distancing. All of us saw the consequences of children having to be virtually schooled for 15 months, the last three months of the school year in 2020 and all of last year. Many parents raise concerns about social isolation and loss of academic progress to the children. These are well-known concerns and I hope we all agree that no one wants to return to virtual schooling if it can be avoided. I believe that we need to do everything that we can to keep schools open. No more masks, keeping kids safe so that schools can stay open is required to wear their masks indoors. This will not work as a transmission reduction strategy if only a portion of the kids and staff wear their masks. Additionally, wearing masks indoors is by order of the governor of California. School districts do not have a clear way to choose which orders to follow and which not to follow. It should also be noted that there are several counties in the state of California that have a mask mandate indoors. This means that in places of work, education, or other work places, that all people must wear masks. I invite you to be noted that the governor has furthered that all hospital employees, all state employees, and all school district personnel must either show up and receive a vaccine or submit to weekly COVID testing. As a state employee, I provide proof of my vaccination and throughout my birthday I wear a mask. As a citizen, anytime that I endorse, I wear a mask. I do this not only for my health, but for the health of others. Through this letter, please know that you have my full support in your effort to meet the mandate established by the governor of California, as well as establishing and enforcing any steps that must be taken to provide states and county firemen for our kids to take and stay in school in person. Sincerely, Captain Stevens. So next we have Amy, Dr. Chrisman, representing parents everywhere, and the topic is mask choice.
Thank the board for your time and time to speak to me. My name is Amy Albert Chrisman. I've been a physician assistant in the emergency room for 14 years. I'm also a parent of a seven and a 12-year-old that live in the boundaries of this district. 18 months ago, we didn't know what to expect from COVID. We were all scared. As a medical provider, I was working through conditions without power of speech. As a parent alongside my husband, who is a fireman, we struggled to find childcare for our children as we worked through the entirety of this pandemic. People were afraid of us and our potential exposures. Everything about COVID was unknown. But now, 18 months later, we know better and so therefore we must do better. The following are all statements that I can make with evidence-based medicine and data. The facts are that we know kids are not at great risk from complications of COVID. The facts are that kids do not spread COVID as readily as other populations. The facts are that school districts across the nation and in other countries stayed fully open and unmasked and did not face major closures last year. The facts are that masks do not prevent the spread of COVID-19 viral virus. The facts are that masks indeed pose great risks for pediatric complication, which usurp protect and educate. These are your students and you are legally responsible to their little being while they are in care. Simply put, mandating a face mask law to attend school in person with a child at greater risk. There's a multitude of data that shows that masks pose a greater risk to children than COVID. The CDC data available that supports the mask mandate is flawed. Please look at the studies, their sample sizes, their durations. This is junk scientific methodology. The fact of the matter is there's no head-to-head study. In America, they compare masks to masks with data, none. All studies have co-factors of ventilation, physical barriers, and social distancing. There is no apples-to-apples conspiracy. I am well-versed on the CDC guidelines you are given to enforce. I know you feel your hands are tied and I know you feel like to honor. How do you think that parents have felt for the last 18 months? We simply have had no choice but to participate in this program for everyone's health. But now after 18 months, we know better. But now, after eighteen months, we know better, so we must do better. There is a solution. Give parents the choice. Give parents the option to medically exempt their child from wearing a mask to school. Give parents the choice to assume full liability for this decision in writing. It is called opting out. There are other school districts leading the way. The following districts have sent a resolution in writing to the CDPH and are offering mask choice to their families. South Atlantic Valley, Cabasrona, Placentia, Gorkland, Ramona, Alkheim, Beaumont, Sutter, Tulare, Rockland, Clovis, Hesperia, Redlands, Dry Cities, Miranda, and Unified Christian Schools. And there's more than that now. Even the Orange County Department or Board of Education is suing the CDPH for trying to impose the mask mandate. An example of this resolution was emailed to all board members earlier and received with no response. They were always also copying to Ms. Murphy and Ms. Dan Cruz. Should you need another copy for review? And I appreciate you both getting back to me getting them. In Cleveland, I've seen a bit of COVID in eighteen months in the emergency room, but I haven't once had a really sick COVID pediatric patient, not one admission. You know, I have seen more pediatric psychiatric 50-on-50s and suicide attempts than I have ever in my 14 years of work combined. Our kids are lost, and they need leadership to protect their right to an education without medical discrimination. Masks are not the answer. Masks do not protect them. In fact, studies show that they can harm them. The risk is far greater than the reward. Mask choice allows parents to do what's best for their children, and they should be the ones to decide. For goodness sake, a school nurse cannot even give your child a benefit of or an allergic reaction for the school district given force placing a medical device over a child's face for 68 hours a day? Make it make sense? School board trustees. School board trustees, it is important to do what is right. It's more important to do what is right than to do what is popular. Be the leaders we elected you to be. Stand up for our little community. We are not L.A. We respectfully request you submit a mask choice resolution to the state. You were elected to represent students and parents. Here we are, in front of you, right in front of you. Do not leave us and our children in the dust. Thank you.
Next, George Liddy, representing himself, and his topic is mask mandates in our district. Please, as far as applause or any other comments, please refrain from doing that. It's not something that we can allow on a coordinating.
Before I start, I can point out that everything about the state has been meticulously sourced and documented in fact checks and footnotes that each of you have got via today. I think all of us here share one common goal: keeping the schools open for in-person classes. The best way to maximize the odds of this happening are for everyone to be required to wear a mask. Much of what's not true about masks existed is being fundamentally misunderstood concept. My mask offers a bit of protection for me, but a lot of protection for you. Arresting germ propagation happens source is the function of masking, and why every one must wear it to be effective. A few points to consider. One, COVID doesn't affect kids anyway. The truth is, more than 49,000 kids ages zero to 17 have been admitted to hospitals for COVID in the U.S. in the last year. As of this point, 19% of all hospitalizations are children. That's an all-time high. We are adding more than 300 a day now, far more than it did in January, and to 400% daily increase in cases in just the last 10 days. This is an emergency. The curve is shocking, almost straight up. See it for yourself at covid.cdc.gov. Another point, there are no peer-reviewed studies showing masks work. There actually are. You can find links in the post-game on the Rim School's Facebook page to a Journal of American Virology peer-reviewed study showing 97% efficiency for medical masks, 95% for a homemade mask. Again, this is on the X scale, and it can't be a coincidence that the rate of positivity for the flu, a virus the same size as COVID, dropped 98% last year, a year in which most of us wore masks and practiced social distancing. Just compare Florida and New York to see plain evidence of the difference in mask mandate versus no mask mandate states. In Florida, the current load of kids being hospitalized is increasing by 368 a week, and that number is growing exponentially. In New York State, roughly the same size with mask mandates in place, and plus our worst-case state, that number is 42 versus 368 in Florida. Florida's death rate of 100,000 is five times California's, where we also have mask mandates. 138 a day in Florida, 48 in California, which is almost twice the population. Why on earth would we want to adopt Florida's no mandate policies? Little wonder that Florida is a chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics and called for universal mask mandates, and why several large school boards in Florida and Texas are receiving fines and imprisonment to insist on masking after more than 5,000 kids tested positive or were exposed. Well, here's another point. What policies do the world's leading medical researchers have for masks in their own workplace? These are the actual experts in the field, which absolutely none of us here in this room can claim to be. And every single one I could find mandates masks in their facilities, even those who also mandate the vaccine. Johns Hopkins Medical Center, Harvard Medical School, Stanford, University Chapel Hill. Nobody likes wearing a mask. And anyway, if you're really saying you know more or had somehow done better research on your couch than the best medical researchers in the world who require masks at their facilities even when 100% of their employees are vaccinated? Isn't it then obvious that we have to require that here, well over half of our kids are not vaccinated? Finally, the masks, this point, the masks are dangerous to kids because of CO2 retention. Here's a peer-reviewed study in the Journal of the American Medical Association that proves otherwise. This corporate spending on the use of surgical-based masks to ensure that processes move changing level. I'm just about done. If really just a person opposed to masks, maybe it's canceled.
George, can you pass the previous speaker off? I'm now here to go away beyond the figure, and I just gave a spoken 50 seconds. Let's find out that I didn't talk, or I already said that hesitant, so I can't go ahead and show up anybody else at this point.
I just have some more sense.
So, please continue.
If really just a person opposed to masks taking the chance with your kid and then your family getting COVID by not wearing a mask, the choice might make more sense. But that's not the case. It's you taking the chance on others getting it by your kid not wearing a mask. I fully support the board and administration taking the common sense step of requiring masks in our schools, our best shot to keep them open.
Our next speaker is going to be Tammy Hopkins. Please understand that if I'm unable to maintain decorum here, we are going to have to take steps that I really don't want to have to take. Please allow us to be able to just involve the speakers. I did allow him to go over time, but I also let the previous speaker go for almost five minutes as well, so. And I'm not going to drop this discussion. Tammy Hopkins, if you guys could. Please understand that the time to the two previous speakers took just five minutes. To go this point, I am going to cut somebody off if they go beyond five minutes, but I'm going to allow them to finally the previous speakers out.
Thank you. I'm going to try to talk loud, because I know it's hard to hear in the background. Everybody hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Tammy Hopkins, and I'm a longtime community member, mother of two awesome teenagers. I write to my husband, who works as a fire captain in Riverside, and I also work for the district as a speech therapist. I love our community and work with so many amazing teachers and administrators, and I support everything they've been doing. I'm here today to voice my support for choice, to decide if my child should be masked at school regardless of their vaccination status. Every day, I'm reminded that we live in an amazing country that is founded on freedoms and liberties. We see the turmoil and complete horror in our world today, where people have no rights and are suffering greatly. It reminds me to not take the freedoms that we have for granted and to defend them. Every day, we must evaluate the risks in life that are presented to us. We must accept the unpleasant reality that risk is everywhere, but we have the intelligence to weigh our own options. Pandemic restrictions have caused a surge in mental health-related emergency room visits last year, including a 24% increase for children ages 5 to 11, and a 31% increase among teens ages 12 to 17. The toxic loop of fear and uncertainty has made us all sick, myself included, as my children. I do not dismiss the continuing danger that COVID-19 presents to kids as well as high-risk adults, and I respect their right to choose for themselves and will do my part to protect them. I am disturbed that our children are continuing to be masked when it is not supported by science or logic. Unfortunately, logic seems to be greatly missing from the conversations around masks that scientifically has not been proven to work. After absorbing the scientific evidence, I feel that overall, the risk to children is too is too low to justify removing restrictions in place. As a speech therapist who currently serves 44 children, I cannot provide meaningful therapy when both of our masks from masks are covered. I spoke to a highly unintelligible student today, and he told me that he wants to cry when people don't understand him, and that wearing a mask makes him sad. This student is difficult to understand even without a mask, and masks only make it harder for him to communicate with peers and teachers. Can you imagine the long-term effects for this sweet boy that was trapped and socially isolated? It's horrible. Imagine how it must feel for children with disabilities who rely heavily on reading lists and facial expression to make sense of their world. Even typically developing children learn how to produce sound by seeing what they apply on their mouth. These will have serious implications on reading, spelling, and writing, not to mention competence and self-esteem, which are all linked. This will present lifelong implications. It's time to reevaluate which pandemic restrictions are worth keeping in place and the heavy consequences for our children if we don't fight for freedom of choice. If you want to see real change, the power is in the hands of the people we elect. On September 14, you have the chance of a lifetime to say yes or no. It's your choice, to recall Governor Newsom. I recommend removing those from office that believe the government knows better for you and your families. Maybe for the time.
Yeah, representing kids is fun, and the topic is mask mandates. Chris, please. Chris Green.
Okay, so I'm a concerned parent. I was fortunate enough to go to this school district from kindergarten all the way to graduation. I love it up here. I have a son at MPH, and I'm not here to just speak out for him, but all the poor kids that are trying to breathe. Okay, if you guys want to look ridiculous in your face diaper, that's one thing, you're adults. These kids are trying to breathe, all right? So I'm going to try to stick to my script here. I'm pretty committed. This school district is not a hospital. Okay, they're not doctors, you're not scientists. Our kids are not your patients. Experimenting with this mask mandate on them is child abuse. Period. That guy on your representation, okay, the teachers you mean that you guys work for is one of the most corrupt organizations, half of the country, but on the planet. So keep that in mind when you guys watch this crap. This is all government-funded BS. I don't believe any of it, and nobody else here does either, okay? Why don't you look up some clinical studies? Okay, there are zero studies that prove the masks are beneficial to stop the spread of the China-made Wuhan virus, okay? All you gotta do is find a little box that says right on it. Okay, have you done that? It does not stop the spread. That mask you're wearing right there does nothing, okay? It's like setting up a chain link fence and trying to keep mosquitoes out of your house, okay? It doesn't work. Let me see what I left off here. Okay, so I've heard it out, so some independent studies for you guys, all right? New study finds COVID masks harm children's physical and mental health. Have you thought about that? Masks are harmful, harmful, 17 ways. There you go, this is for you guys, okay? Children to inhale over 12 times more than safe amount of CO2, okay? Masked children, tragic, unscientific, and energy. These are doctors, these are virologists. These are people that actually care about the community and families and kids that are being censored, right? Everything's being censored, not all true, except for the PS that you guys have been putting out here and everything else that's on social media, right? So, again, being still. You know, we have great teachers, and some of these teachers are focusing on educating kids, and I commend them for that. We have other teachers that have taken upon themselves to be petty tyrants and acting like mask Nazis instead of focusing on teaching. So I'm here to call out one specific teacher, she's on notice, her name's Ms. Bell. She's a math teacher at a PH. And I hear that she's acting this way towards not only my kid, but all kids. They're trying to bury a mask down to get a little bit of rap. And she immediately starts harassing them and threats that they're going to get in trouble in front of the principal's officer. She's on notice, and what I mean by that is I plan on, if you get a yeah, I'm going to organize protests, because I think you guys aren't going to do anything, so I'm going to come out with the teachers. So I'm going to find out where she lives. I've done this by the way, right in New York City, and I went to Katrina Foley, that communist mayor that used to be there. Went protest in front of the house, seeing that strength. I meant, with physical harm, I would never touch, you know, a hair on her head, right? But I would build an organized protest in front of anyone's house that continues to abuse our children in blessing these mask mandates, especially if the kids are trying to breathe for two seconds. I think that's it. So, again, I would plan to press on my personal rights in whatever house. I'm going to do whatever it takes to make a stand and protect these kids. You guys are participating in an experiment that is harmful and detrimental to their health. I'm also here to represent in-world experts. Alex Jones was right, all right? He predicted all this years ago. You'll do your research, folks. Operation Lockstep and the Lockup in Indonesia. Okay, we spoke to Brandon this in 2010. Go look it up. There's also our event 201. This was a break in multiple practice virus was launched. That was all the plan, all this lockdown, and all you guys capitulated to this garbage, to this mask mandate, to this experimental vaccine. Also, Operation Lockup, that's the CIA operatives inside of our media that aligns with us, has been around since the 60s. So, I just say everyone have to question everything. Research, research, research. Turn on your, turn off your stupid locks, cancel your cable, and never stop finding persistence and big money.
Michelle O'Conner, who is representing parents and children everywhere. Topic number one, oxygen and the Constitution, mask choice.
Hi, my name is Michelle O'Conner. I'm a fourth-generation non-resident, graduate of Rome High School, full degrees in biochemistry and molecular biology. My master's is in IT. Mother to five amazing unmasked, breathing children and honorable husband. This is notice. On behalf of children and families on our mountain, my friend, my findings raise significant concerns, both medically and legally, of the current mask policy in place. Masks are ineffective with a purpose claimed by the mandate, potentially harmful and only authorized for use by an emergency use authorization. Masks are ineffective, and in many ways, they do harm. It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical masks offer next to no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. The size of a virus particle is much too small to be stopped by a surgical mask cloth or gown. A single variant of SARS-CoV-2 is about 60 to 140 nanometers or 0.1 microns in size. The pore size of a surgical mask is 200 to 1,000 times that size. Consider that the CDC website states surgical masks do not catch harmful particles in smoke, and that the size of smoke particles in a wildfire are 0.5 microns, which is five times the size of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. Wearing the mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2 or similarly sized influenza Wearing the mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2 or similarly sized influenza is like throwing sand at a chain link fence. It doesn't work. There has been one large randomized control trial that specifically examined whether masks protect their virus from the coronavirus. This study found mask wearing did not reduce that conventional levels of statistical significance the incidence of SARS-CoV-2 infection. There have been hundreds of mask studies related to influenza transmission, done over several decades. It is well-established fact that masks do not stop viruses. Part of that evidence shows that cloth-based masks actually increase influenza-related illnesses. Bacteria are 50 times larger than virus particles. As said, virus particles can enter through the mask boards, and bacteria can be trapped inside the mask, resulting in the mask wearer continually being exposed to that bacteria and promoting the growth of that bacteria, which is what you all are doing right now. Related to the 1918, 1919 influenza pandemic, there was almost universal agreement among experts that deaths were virtually never caused by the influenza virus itself, but resulted directly from severe secondary pneumonia caused by well-known bacterial pneumopathogens that colonize the upper respiratory tract. Dr. Fauci and his National Institute of Health studied pandemics and epidemics, and they the vast majority of influenza deaths resulted from secondary bacterial pneumonia from face masks. All parties mandating use of face masks are not only willfully ignoring established science, but are engaging in what amounts to an old-school clinical experimental trial on these children. This conclusion is reached by the fact that face mask use and COVID-19 incidents are being recorded in scientific opinion pieces promoted by the CDC and others. The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC itself found no reduction in our transmission with the use of face masks. Wearing respirators comes with a focus to physiological and psychological burdens, especially to children. These burdens can even be severe enough to cause life-threatening conditions. 15 years ago, National Taiwan University Hospital concluded that the use of N95 masks in healthcare workers causes them to experience hypoxemia, which is a low level of oxygen in blood, which is what you are all experiencing now, and hypercapnia, elevation of blood's problem dioxide levels. Studies of simple surgical masks show significant reductions in blood oxygen as well. In one particular study, researchers measured blood oxygen before surgery as a 53 surgeons. Researchers found the mask reduced the blood oxygen level significantly. The longer the duration of wearing masks, perhaps a 6 to 8 hour school day, the greater the drop in blood oxygen levels. Furthermore, the mandatory non-mask in schools is a major threat to a child's development. It ignores the essential needs of the growing child. The well-being of children and young people is highly dependent on the emotional connection with others. Masks create a threatening and unsafe environment where emotional connection becomes difficult, if not possible. Informed consent is required for investigational medical therapies, regardless of the lack of safety and efficacy behind the decision to require a child for a mask. It is illegal to mandate emergency use authorization approved investigational medical therapies without informed consent. Mask use for viral transmission prevention is authorized for emergency use only, even though the CDC itself says the masks don't stop viruses. Emergency use authorization by the FDA means the products are investigational and experimental only. The statute granting the FDA the power to authorize a medical product for emergency use requires that the person being administered the uncooked product be advised of deserving right to refuse the administration of this product. This statute further recognizes the well-sold doctrine of medical experiments and clinical research will not be performed on human subjects without the express informed consent of the individual receiving treatment. You have been now informed, and our document of this is to stop illegally forcing children to wear masks. I urge you to comply with federal and state law. The mandates are not law, they're unconstitutional, and they are illegal. And advise children and their parents they have a right to refuse to wear a mask as a measure to prevent or reduce infection from COVID-19. Any other course of action is contrary to the law. Please confirm that no further pressure will be exerted to follow this illegal mask mandate.
Number 29.3, RTA and CSDA representatives. We'll start with RTA, this is the Gazi is on Zoom.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make sure because I couldn't turn on my camera. Alrighty, there it goes. Alrighty, good evening, everyone. Um, so my name is Inga Zee Lesser, and I am the new president of the Forbun Teachers Association, and I'm also a special education teacher over at VOE. Um, first of all, the new E-Board would like to welcome everyone to a great school year. We know things have been rough, and, um, we disagree on a lot of things, but we are happy to be back. So where do I begin? Um, well, we've endured so much within the last year and a half with the pandemic, and we as a district and as an organization have worked tirelessly to ensure the safety of ourselves, our students, and the communities that we serve. Um, I know that RTA and CSDA have adapted with these measures and will continue to advocate to keep our staff and students safe. This includes providing outdoor breathing breaks for our students, disinfecting of desks in high-traffic areas, and providing quick and technological alternatives for our students who needed to be out of the classroom. We've walked through our hallways, and even with the masks, our students are happy to be in school, to see their teachers and supporting staff, connect with their friends, and are ready to learn despite the challenges. Rham students are resilient, and masking will not stop them from being successful academically and socially emotionally. With our schools being fully reopened, the district and RTA have a commitment to the highest safety standards and believe with the collabora- collaboration of our stakeholders, we will advocate what is most beneficial to our members and our students. To our members, our families, and the community that we, we, we recognize the struggles, we do, we, we hear you. Um, we love our community, and we want to continue serving it in the best way that we can. And we make decisions with you and the science in mind. We just want to thank you for being flexible with us, and we support in making sure that our students obtain a safe and equitable education. Thank you.
CSDA, Suzanne.
Good evening. Uh, in order to get across section of feelings from the CSDA chapter members, I set out a short survey. 90% of the survey, uh, return, survey said that their workloads have been and are being impacted by vacant positions or lack of substitutes. The impact is not just things not getting done. Uh, vacancies and lack of staff is causing a physical and/or mental impact. Classified workers care about their work ethic, and when they are switched then or pulled in different directions, they worry about the quality of their normal work. One member said that they were trying to be three people. Some indicated they are working overtime or working through breaks and lunches. We still have some classifications on furlough days, and this year was really a rough time to have employees trying to get ready for campuses of on-campus students and fewer days to do so because of furloughs. Um, furloughs are not going to save the district money as we end up having to pay them in overtime to give them the time they need to go. On lines or sayback to the office, I had a steady stream of families and probably involved many students. Um, I, um, there wasn't even a break long enough for me to count how many had come in, uh, which it was exciting to see them coming back. Um, and then, um, not being able to get a setup if somebody needs to go to the doctor or, uh, the dentist or other important matters, it's, it's stressful because no one wants to leave their job to another employee um, to do because that causes them additional stress. Some other concerns that were brought up. Um, they are wondering why jobs haven't seemed to be slow in a timely manner, but it's known that there's going to be a need. Uh, it again leaves us in a situation where we have holes and no filter, and students and other employees are paying the consequences. As part of the survey, I did ask, um, chapter members about masking, and, uh, 47% felt that student families should be able to choose to wear masks for, uh, protection from COVID and experience, and 53% felt that for the protection of everyone, masks should be required. Um, I just want to close on a positive note that we are so happy to be back, it's so good to have the students back on campus in classrooms doing what we're, we're here to do. Uh, they are so happy to be there, they are respectfully learning and following the mask mandate. And, you know, they're doing what they need to do to be on campus, thank you.
Okay, 10.0, governing board members reports an announcement. 10.1, governing board members. I'm gonna be, um, going first, I'm giving it my time to our attorneys. Um, and like William Dietrich, if you can come up and make your statement, he's a partner with AALRR. He's here to advise the board on official state mandates.
I am, I am here, can you hear me okay? Okay, excellent. Uh, I, I, as you, as you said, I'm a lawyer, um, I'm a state attorney, my, my, I'm not gonna talk about science, I'm there just to tell you a stable law, okay? So as of today, where we currently stand on state mandates is we have an order from, or we have guidance from California Department of Health of California mandating that all students wear masks while indoors, and also mandated that adults that work in school settings wear masks when they are indoors with children. Okay, that's a staple. Your own county Department of Health has actually adopted the, the regulation or the, the guidance from CPH, so in the county of San Bernardino, there is also a health order that mirrors, uh, the CPH guidance. So as it currently stands today, masks are required for all children unless they have an exception, and there are certain exceptions. For example, kids under 2, uh, don't have to wear a mask. Uh, people can be badly exempted. Um, although, uh, I was reading an article this morning, and the state medical board has sent out things to all physicians saying that if notes are given out, um, not in good faith, that physicians could actually lose their, or have their license jeopardized. And this is directly on the state medical court list, so. Uh, and so that's, um, that's another exception. A third exception is people who are hard of hearing or need to read lips in order to speak. That is also an exception, yes.
So they couldn't be wearing a mask if they need to read the book. They would need to be reading the Latin lips of other people, not wearing masks.
Correct.
So they're not wearing masks.
The guidance applies to both. Um, people who are hearing and then just hearing other people, they not need to wear masks, and the people who they're speaking to in that setting would not need to wear a mask, although there's also guidance that says if school say, you not find an alternative like a clear mask or a face shield. Uh, I had the same question you did, Madam President, about that regulation, so I double-checked it today, and that is what it says. So that's where we are on the current mandates, okay? Um, we heard today from a, a representative from the California Department of Public Health, they said, you know, they'll revisit this in November, um. I would hope they revisit it sooner, um, and I would anticipate that they would, they would revisit this sooner, they've been trying to, as things have changed, they've been trying to get back together and revisit some of these mandates. But as of today, it is mandatory for all schools in the state of California. Um, I've heard, uh, there have been some schools that passed resolutions about choice. Um, I'm not familiar with all the schools that have done that. I would note that one of the districts in San Diego County that did it, and it was actually mentioned by a speaker, today went back and reversed that decision uh, due to legal concern in, in going against the mask mandate. So I need by providing kind of the general, what the state of the law is, you want me to talk about uh, potential violations for not complying, okay? So there's, there's a few, and they're in varying degrees of, of disparity, okay? So one of the things is, um, many insurance providers, uh, it's every, you know, at Riverside County have sent out letters saying if this school district is not following the applicable guidance involving, um, vaccinations and masks, um, they may not carve claims relating to COVID issues, so you'd be uninsured. Uh, there's also, I mentioned this, um, but I, I would, I would also mention that, you know, these, these only happen in severe cases, but there are criminal penalties for, uh, people who, uh, willfully ignore, uh, government orders or governors' orders, and so there is the potential for a criminal penalty. If you were to ask me when's the last time I saw somebody prosecuted, I'm, I don't, I don't have that in mind. But I'm just, I'm giving you that as well. The other thing that, that we're concerned about is because we have this state mandate, and because your funds are derived directly from the state, there is concern about funding. Do I have any direct, can I bring anything directly saying to the committee, cut your funding if you're not following the mask mandate? No. But it is a state law that came from, or I'm sorry, a guidance that's been codified through your county that's coming directly from the state, so there's always that risk as well to something, keep mindful of your funding sources telling you that you're something in the country. And so that's kind of another issue. Um, with regard to, um, uh, students, um, the other thing that's left to the school district by the way is, is for you to decide how you want to address students who not follow the mask mandate. And a number of my clients have been working closely, you know, with, you know, with the county, with each other, trying to come up with a good way to still provide an educational opportunity to students, but also be able to ensure that students are staying masked without being too, you're coming in with penalties. So that's kind of the other area that they lack up to local, uh, agencies. But what I will say is, I don't believe they've left any discretion of local agencies about whether or not to enforce the mandate. So if that, I can take any questions there, if you ask.
Curious, are there any counties in the state that have not adopted the, um, the state's guidelines? Like you said, if it was the guidelines the state or county adopted, are there counties that haven't?
I, I believe, and I may, if I, if I'm misfiguring, I believe Orange County does not, and there are other counties that have adopted kind of similar language, but not just saying we're, we're gonna adopt a bit of the state does, so. Uh, there's variation in these kinds of other counties. Here's that, although you know, the county doesn't, um, adopted that the, the, the mandatory guidance from CPH will still apply.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Cindy, do you want to make your comments? Oh, actually, I did have a question, I did, I'm sorry, I did, I'm sorry, I'm waiting, I'm cooking up. Um, actually, Mr. Fisher, if you can come back to the podium, please? If you can come back to the podium, we do have another question. So, so the boards that adopt resolutions or just resolutions that go to the governor's office or whomever the board sends those resolutions to, just urgently change in the mandate. It's not a resolution, the boards aren't sending resolutions like, we're not gonna do it. It's just a resolution to encourage the state to change the mandate, correct?
I do believe that at least one district governor did say, no, we're not, we're not, we're not on mass choice, then they reversed that.
That outline down in San Diego?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you're right, there are, there's a kind of statements of encouragement to the governor to to reconsider, or say it's a supportive choice in general. Uh, those are coming out, and I don't think that those would bear the same penalties of just not enforcing the mandate.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. But are there legal ramifications to those resolutions? Or are there hidden ramifications to those resolutions? I'm not very hit in ramifications, and I, I do believe that the boards often express their opinions regarding those types of things, so I'm not immediately speak. And, you know, keep a word for me, as long as they're also. And you know, keep a word from me. As long as they're also listening.
Thank you.
Well.
Oh, so it's me. Okay. So I just want to say thank you for everyone coming in to express both sides of the mask issue. We understand um just all the the frustration, the anger and they and that and my older daughter, and she is a teacher as well as a someone who is taking classes. So she's made it up with both sides of the issue as both a teacher and a student. So I have a little bit of what we're going through. But I do appreciate all of you coming here. And we cannot debate it with you right now. This is not people's grand avenue, but I do appreciate your time and effort that you guys took to come here. Um I do welcome everybody back to school. I thought that this would be um more of a normal year. And it's unfortunate that very it came and now we're in the situation we are in. It's really heartbreaking that that we're in this situation with the doubt you're going through. I do want to welcome Zach. You know, keep my comments right. Zach, I'm really excited you're on the board. Just remember that you are allowed to participate in our discussion. And I hope that you do chime in and and ask questions in your your opinion. And of course, you may vote, even though your vote doesn't count. But we'd like to have you participating in this experience. So thank you for for going to the election process. We appreciate it. And so that's it. Jordan, will you go next, please?
Good evening. Yes, welcome, Zachary. Very glad to have you on the board. And I appreciate the warm welcome from our new R T A president and new board that that they sent on to us. And I'm so glad to see so many people here, actually. It's very nice when folks gain interest in our school meetings because it is the, you know, running the district. So I appreciate everybody coming out and I would say, please note, everyone that has spoken has been perfect. And if you'd like to speak further, I mean, I know that all of us are always welcome. And always happy to chat and uh spiritual meetings that what happened and so does me now. I would also note that uh that I'm always at the farmer's market usually. Every every, I would take, if you'd like to come and chat with me sometime. If you're running the spring's growing market, thank you, Bill. I'm looking at, I'm just very glad to see you back to school tonight. I'd like to give a quick commendation to Miss Elliott. I don't know if you experienced that. I thought I saw her. There you go. Uh I thought it was a really wonderful event. I love that we moved it outdoors and invited community organizations to come, like Harvard Arts Association, A S O, Chamber, and you know, Rimhead Foundations there, even the San Bernardino Department of Behavioral Health showed up. It was really wonderful. It was it was a fair light atmosphere. It was really nice to see everybody out and about and coming back on campus. Uh thank you to the RIM High School and to the Zima. And uh I like that format. I think better than um back to school night, you know, last year where all the teachers were in their classrooms, having everyone out there a couple of again, like they're there. Uh I'm looking forward to future events at C H E like P G meetings. I'm looking forward to future events like U L A meetings. I know that uh those aren't as exciting, but I like my time. Well, and I'll leave it there. Thank you, everybody.
Bill, you want to go next?
So I worked on a written statement because we're not in a position to dialogue with people at the board meeting. And so I have some some comments and some things that I'd like us to do tonight. One is, we have a singular mission as trustees. And that is to educate the young people in our community. Personally, I have extremely high view of the rights and liberties of all Americans. I frankly believe that those rights are from above as stated in the Tonight, in addition to our concerns about COVID nineteen and the effect of our students and its effect on children, staff, I need to remind us of something else that's taking place. And I'm not downplaying the significance of COVID nineteen. But right now, we have Americans that may be trapped in Afghanistan. The prayers need to be with them in behalf of them people. We need to pray for our soldiers who are there and those who have returned home. Many who are suffering from P T S P, the events of this week have opened up those wounds severely. People are suffering and dying as the regimes in power change hands. And I'd like to ask just for a moment of silence. And if you don't pray, that's okay. If you don't believe in prayer, that's okay. But would you at least give some silent thoughts for our soldiers and our Americans and the people in Afghanistan that are struggling now as that regime changes? Thank you. Tragically, since we learned the frightening news about COVID nineteen, we have become a polarized nation. Every community is divided. Somehow, we have to figure out how to work together. One of the problems is we're trying to control virus that we can't control. It goes beyond human ability. But we've often tried to be good. First and foremost, more than anything else, we need to have students in school. That's our mission. What is safe? I don't know that any one of us really knows. Frankly, I'm thankful that at this moment, we don't have to make that decision. It troubles me that our government forces things upon us. I do think that the recall vote is a time for the state to make its own decisions. During the elections, even then, candidates say that they would not take the vaccine that President Trump had developed. That's your thing about people to be confident with the vaccine, which right now statistically is being proven to actually save our people from virus. Mental health issues for our children are critical. A word hides, right? Because I'm a member of the Rotary Club. I've got the envelope of Rotary on my thigh. Where is your board members to see some of you and some of the staff here? There it is. And we operate by a test. The test is, it's called four B test. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will the good will and better friendships will be beneficial to all concerned? I love it when our third, fourth, and fifth graders at Valley of the Channel have come up with essays for that for that test of ethics. And that's where we're at as a as a society. Is it the truth? We're all questioning that at so many levels. Is it fair to all concerned? Will the good will and better friendships will be beneficial to all concerned? How do we do something as a board that benefits everyone? When we have staff that are afraid, when we we've been purchased tonight from our C S D A that we have staff who, well, there's not enough people to fill positions. And we're at very trying times. And I'm just saying, together, we need to say, uh we stay united. How do we benefit all? How do we do what's fair to all? And let's keep working that down. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I just want to add, we do have a recent grad who was a Marine who's in Afghanistan, who's been helping with the evacuations, Elliot Chan. So if you could please keep giving your prayers as well, he is family. Now.
As to not be repetitive, I do want to uh just verbalize my appreciation for everyone coming out again on both sides. Some of you are my dear friends and uh I know that this isn't a personal uh you know, matter, but this is a decision that you feel is right for your families. And I love that you have the ability to verbalize that and to share that. Unfortunately, we can't engage in a again, a dialogue. We can't. We have nothing to go on tonight related to that. Um but I will just remind those or maybe educate those who don't know. I am a parent in the district also. I graduated from this district. I have children who go to L I P. I have husband coaches here and I'm gonna get emotional. My family was destroyed last year by not being able to be in school. And I don't want that to happen again. You know, for for a few months. I understand that our rights as individuals are very important, I can tell. And I hope you know that we're in a position where my family is going to follow the rules that are set out in protocols so we can stay open. I know people feel strongly on both sides. Again, I respect that you guys have the right to do that. And I just hope that we can all respect one another and try to keep our district running. Try to keep our students and our teachers and our coaches and our all the the grownups that are part of this involved in the schools because the mental toll that it took um on all of us was really, really painful to see. And gosh, I'm not crying. Do you guys know this? In I just, I I want us to stay in school as long as possible. I know that's what you guys are doing too. So thank you for for taking the time. Thank you for vocalizing. Like Jordan said, we are all available. We are part of this community too. And you guys know how to reach me. Many of you that I'm looking at have my personal cell phone number. Please reach out to me and let's talk through this. I would love to hear it from you more. All right, thank you.
Ten point two, super agenda. Well, thank you to our presenters and the board and the speakers who are coming tonight and sharing sharing your passions as we listen. Um I'd like to, um we had a principal start in July and nobody was at the board meeting. So I'd like to make sure that she's introduced tonight. Megan Bialy is our new principal. And um C H E, so welcome. I just have a couple of thank yous tonight. I'd like to thank Ed Services and our teachers for attending professional learning together two days prior to the start of school. They were covering topics such as universal design for learning, habit strategies throughout the school, D R A kits for reading assessments, and our paraprofessionals who also participated in training for two days. We are happy to be in school five days a week and to visit our classrooms and see um kids learning. Um I'd like to thank um Dominic Pierre usually uh comes to this board meeting. He was here tonight, but had to go. We always um introduce him. So we work very closely with our sheriffs. Thank you for being here tonight. Um other than that, we're just really happy to have Zachary and get to know you. And we know you have your first presentation tonight. So we will turn it over to you.
I just like to thank the board members for such a warm welcome. I'm really excited to be here tonight. I hope I can provide some valuable insight from a bit of a different perspective. And um with Ms. Burr, I did a small presentation for you guys about what's to come in the next few weeks and times that I'm in high school. First off, I just wanted to welcome everybody back. I know myself as a student, I'm very excited to be back on campus. And you know, we're just, everyone's really excited for school year, uh great school year, and the things for some learning and and we're excited to see where the rest of the year can go for us. We will be having a we'll be having a new to the mountain convention of the nation on Tuesday, August twenty fourth. That is to welcome new members to the community, to the high school, to the school district. And then that following Thursday, we will be having our back to school night. It's gonna be a little bit different than previous back to school nights, but it's gonna be really exciting. You really get the whole community together to um get excited and get at inspiring school. Next up, we do have the learning lab opening here in the RIM Library. In September, it will be um similar to a tutoring program where students can come after school to, you know, get extra assistance in certain subjects with their homework and their classwork. And as as we all know, it has been very difficult also today, but this will be valuable tutoring for students that do need some extra help. And lastly, we do have some representatives from Los coming in November. This is a program to keep these schools of education for for a university and for outside of high school, for the generation and now for the such preparation as well. That is the end of the presentation. And like I said, you know, we are very excited to be back in school. And we do have a very exciting, very event this week. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you. Thank you.
Eleven point zero reports and presentations, send directions. Eleven point one legislative update report, trustee Gardner. Good evening. Okay, so when Sandabs met, um uh when legislators were still on vacation, so I don't have a bill report. I do know that um eighty one oh four, which is the pass no pass uh bill that was signed, I do know that we we have to post it, I think thirty days after we do the notification, correct? Thirty days. Anyways, so um we have to list that on our website. It's gonna be interesting. Um I haven't seen the whole list of colleges that will accept pass no pass. I know the U C's and the Cal State as well. Um but we have to urge caution to our students applying to college this of all the seniors that they really take a look at their universities and colleges to make sure that if they're choosing pass no pass for some of their classes, that those universities do take that pass no pass. So it's going to be a little bit challenging to in the admissions process this year, unfortunately. Next, so students look on the individual college submissions from the U I. If any college that a student is applying to, you should double check. And even even double check on the U C, just so that you get in the habit of of checking the website for the admission requirements and any kind of variance thereof, especially because S A T, A C T, some colleges now are not requiring it and do not include it in the admissions process. Like the U C's, other schools are are still requiring them. So again, just double check, double check everything this year. People, it's it's still a little bit crazy. Um Sandabs did have a small contingent that had a meeting with Congressman P Apple there. It was really great conversation. It was, we assume, um he was absolutely available. We spoke to him for almost an hour um on all of our topics uh of concern. One of them was the education budget. Being sure that they keep to the special education entitlement increases that in ten years, hopefully, special education will be funded at forty percent promised by the federal government. We'll see if that happens. I'm really hopeful. Special education seems to have traction um in Congress. Uh thank God, thank goodness, sorry. And so anyways, um excited about that. We did, I did give a little speech about our own special education um story. It's interesting when we tell, when I tell people that you do have to bust a student downhill for our services that we cannot provide on the mountain, it it seems to trip them out. That you must people on the mountain for services. Yeah. And guess how much our transportation for special education is? Four hundred thousand dollars comes out of general plan. So those stories do resonate. Um the great part is that um the congressman did say that these for like whatever these these platforms that are qualified, Sandabs, they are useful in use in Congress, that they do tell the story, they do provide um backup of what is needed at the local level. So that is exciting. And with that, I'm gonna second to the homework, including the setup is one for these two via U And with that, I'm gonna second to the homework, including that Sarah is one for these two via the Mr. Zach. But they put in your shared docs, the SandDex twenty twenty one and federal legislative platform and the twenty twenty one state legislative platform. SandDex wants us to reach out to all of our boards in all of our county, in all of our districts to get feedback on what the twenty twenty two platforms should look like. So get, please take a look at the documents and then email me your feedback. There are some things that Kevin Gordon, you know, capital advisors, has suggested that maybe we take out special education. And I'm like, oh my gosh, so we still have a long fight to do for special education. I know Fair and Full Funding, yes, we want to see that still in the state legislative platform, even though we're not gonna see it on valid in twenty twenty two.
I would please to see that on their platforms.
Yeah, yeah, it's, and one thing in terms of the state platform, student support, mental and behavioral health services in schools, E D. Karen Wright has always talked about, and one of the bullet points, programs to enhance a student's self-reliance to cope with stress and pressure in a manner to build protective factors and skills. I think those things are some, in my opinion, still are some important pieces to the policy platform. So please get, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind you in a week. I do have to get this information back to SandDex so they can develop the first draft that goes before us at our next meeting, which is the second Wednesday in September. And the last thing is, I gave you, I gave you a drop box, of course, the federal update. Unfortunately, in the infrastructure bill, the money for schools and school facilities construction was taken out. Yeah, that, that was a little concerning because I think all of us were hoping for a piece of that money to upgrade facilities. Do some things that we definitely need to do for aging structures and infrastructures. So hopefully that will be brought back from a different matter, but you have that update, I sent you guys Kevin Gordon videos to go look at them. When you see that, when you have time, drinking coffee, looking at the internet, whatever. Okay, any questions, guys? So if you have any one week, if you guys have any questions, okay?
And just to focus now, the second Wednesday in September is the eighth, just heads up.
And we're excited to, there was a rumor that the late Starbowl, I mean, I have this the definitions for rural, which included E rate, which we all under, were kind of being revisited, that's not true. So there's other conversations going on with that bill that are out of sight kind of for us, but the exemptions that they already outlined as to that definition of rural are still in play. So we don't have to panic about continuing that late Starbowl, it's just saying, thank goodness.
Cindy, do you know if there's been any movement on that, you know, regarding exemptions for our friends in the high desert?
I think that's part of the play and the bill is being held in committee right now. And I think those are some discussions that are being held by other legislators or their constituents. And we'll see how it goes, I mean, I hope they take in consideration districts like Alamo Valley that have that, that square, the square miles is just killing. You have on their transportation, so we still want to support our sister districts.
And one final question I have for you, it's very nice to represent that I do our basement on the top of SandDex. Has our congressman ever opened that room?
He has, there's been a new meeting that was sort of held, it's the Mountain Desert Coalition, Eric Swanson, Karen Wright, especially Eric Swanson, this is his baby. He will be setting one shortly, I thought it was gonna be in August, but I haven't seen his email yet. And he, Jay comes to us in one. Is that the, let me, he doesn't know if it's organized or it's a sub, no, it's sovereign. It's specific, it's kind of like under a side banner for SandDex and Stanford Indian County School Board Association, the issues executive committee. Eric really wanted to have this Mountain High Desert Coalition. It's not excluding one man or anybody else that wants to be in that party. But it's just the fact that we grow close together and help each other and really aren't half the issues that we're facing. And assembly member, Senator Senator Ochoa Bo, Eric Hayes, Jay Orton-Monti comes, then different services around our area also attend, especially those that are helping our students in economic growth.
Really good meeting, because we have assembly members and states members that represent the parts of the mountain and desert community who participate as well, and really good.
And SandDex is very aggressive in setting up SandDex legislative meetings. So we've had a couple of meetings with Senator Conrad Reva, somebody member, Reva's Senator Ochoa Bo was one, so we, it's much more aggressive in outreach and telling our stories. And that's why the platform is so important, because every legislator gets these documents prior to us meeting with them.
Great, Cindy, eleven point two, everybody in social committee, the social justice committee composition report. William Ellinger, committee chairperson.
So, report on the committee meeting that we all attended. That's humorous, because that's part of what'll be coming out of that report. I remind you of some things, we put data, thank you Cindy, and Tori. For the data that the two of you put together and all, I'll remind you that there's items in there, the twenty twenty one SandDex Student Achievement, College Career Dashboard, MHS graduation rate, MHS suspension rate, M P H suspension rate, R H S A to G completion rate, are you remembering these? Good, good, just a reminder, those are all in the folder there, the maybe and social justice folder. And I'm sure by now you already did your homework of reading the restarting school equity at the center.
Right now.
If you haven't read that yet, please read that document, because that's a brand worthy document for us. As you know, we were advised before the subcommittee that you'd have discussions. We thought that the board, which is so passionate about the subject, we work as a committee of whole. However, the limits, that limits our conversation. And instead, we want to include stakeholders in the conversation from the beginning. We want to promote critical thinking, that's what's really important in this process. We want to have a conversation about equity, equity is not going away. We can have respectful, collaborative and data-driven conversation, that's very important as we work on equity. Since it's a subject that requires listening to our community, not telling them what we want them to do. The committee will be made up of students, teachers, staff, parents and community members. In the future, I'm sure that we will be having additional committees, like a listening committee, perhaps a statement committee. Here's one, bylaws and policy review committee, I'm really looking for which one of the board members is willing to do that. So Jordan, thank you. We'll be developing and referring recommendations to the RIN Unified School District. Remind you of what was stated over a year ago, like leave by this board even before it came on. That the committee would develop and refer recommendations to the RIN Unified School District's board trustees. That includes, but is not limited to, developing a district equity statement, researching equity and social justice programs, trainings and workshops for potential district-wide use and implementation, using a data-driven approach. Reviewing existing board bylaws, board policies, district practices and administrative regulations relating to equity and social justice. Weaving social justice and equity principles into existing board bylaws, board policies, district practices and administrative regulations. Creating a culture of support and embrace for students and staff members that face challenges that necessitate additional work to ensure equity. Seeking out input and feedback from underrepresented stakeholders are why we're trying to change the committee. By the way, I just remind this is because there is an actual item later, which we all know is coming. Seeking out input and resources from social justice experts. There are people that have a lot of views and understanding that are beyond our own understanding, and we want to go down. We want to seek, seeking out resources from equity experts and examining issues such as systemic racism and gender biases to determine how RIN Unified School District students are impacted. I need to remind us of this, because I don't think it's been stated. At some point, this is gonna require a budget. I don't have a number, but I want us to be prepared to invest in this study. Also, one of my big final comments, and because we talked about this also committee meeting. And that is, is that we are going to have to clarify the difference between equity and critical race theory. And that may take some experts to help us do that, but, and critical race theory probably is different than the technical term that's been used in universities and law schools, it's now taken on its own mindset. So these are things that will be in the future, that's my report now.
Great, twelve point zero, action calendar, twelve point one, superintendent approval to revise the attached board policies and administrative regulations to our policies and procedures. The revisions were provided by the California School Boards Association, fiscal impact none. So Natalie?
Second.
Bill? No discussion, let's take a vote.
Well, I just want to say, that's alright, just one thing, really, and that's the, I've said it before, but it's invaluable, the California School Boards Association who has their own slew of lawyers that can review and provide recommendations to the school district, just like ours, without us having to invest the time and resources into figuring out pages two through one hundred fifteen in our board document of, you know, what should be done, what needs to be done, what needs to be reviewed, what can this board document, this board document. They put a lot of background research for us, so the district administration simply has to review all of the procedures, figure out the impacts and then present it to us, which we don't have to agree with you. I think it is really a wonderful service that they provide, and I mention it because our membership is on the consent calendar for tonight. I think we, we get every penny of the weekend out of that membership service.
Anything else? Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point two, superintendent approval to provide for the first and the second meeting of the proposed new board policy, E P one three one three. Stability to be added to our policies and procedures. The board policy was provided by the California School Boards Association, fiscal impact none. Senator Cindy, second, Natalie, discussion? Miss vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point three, superintendent approval to revise board policy and administrative regulation, A R six one five eight. That's independent study to our policies and procedures. The provisions were provided by the California School Boards Association, fiscal impact none. So Natalie?
Second.
Cindy, any discussion? Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point four, superintendent approval to the board policy six one five seven. Distance learning from our policies and procedures that was provided by the California School Boards Association, fiscal impact none. Senator Cindy?
Second.
Jordan, thank you, any discussion?
I just note that this was a policy that we adopted last year, that, you know, revelation is due to a change in California state law. That different learning as we do it is not an option for school districts this year, so it's been not.
And I just want to state that that's disappointing, it's troubling, because it really eliminates us. On the other hand, I understand the goal is to keep students in school. But I'm still thrilled that we may need to have some options in the future.
Yeah, ideally, my preference would be to allow ones to be more locally decided. However, we need to make sure that they are following states mandates.
It was fortuitous of our district to embark on establishing the RIN Virtual Academy a few years before, you know, pre-pandemic is when I was started. So we are a fortunate district to have a program like that, so I know there are other districts that don't have a virtual program, or virtual school setup. Also.
Thank you Michelle for that, for following with that.
And thank you, Mr. Nigro, for.
Absolutely, yes, okay, any other comments? So calling for the votes, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve five, superintendent approval to provide for the first reading of the proposed new board policy, zero four one five equity to be added to our policies and procedures. The board policy was provided by the California School Boards Association, fiscal impact none.
So.
Yeah, second, Natalie?
Cindy.
Cindy, okay, discussion?
So this is a policy statement that we actually shared at the committee, this is one that comes out from C S B A. And we put in some of our own little nuances that fit us.
Fantastic, okay. So, let's call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point six, superintendent approval to restructure the equity and social justice standing committee to a board subcommittee, fiscal impact none.
Still move?
They are, yeah. Second by Natalie, discussion?
Again, we held this committee meeting, we learned a lot from the trainings that you guys did. Having the full board there is not the most effective thing to go about doing it, and I think we thought we'll see what the votes, but it seemed like at the time we all agreed that what could be done in a better, more efficient and more proactive way by having stakeholders be part of that from the get-go versus just being forced first.
And I also want to reiterate and re underline what Bill had mentioned, that we are going to need subcommittees to tackle different tasks. And as such, all board members are going to be involved in some way on those, on all these committees, and all of them are really important. And so, I mean, we made some examples, one is, Bill said, with the committee, then we go into the grading policy. I know that your question about Patrick and that, and I would be completely just so I mean, I'm just honored that you take that, I'm not pushing you to do it, but I'm just saying is that I know your question and that would be amazing on that. So I think that this, we use our strengths for all these different factors that are playing a role in the discussion of equity. Just so you know, I did do my homework, like I said, and I reached out to some other people that have been doing work on equity. Every school district has tackled it in their own way, in their own structure. When Rogers from Southern Indian City Unified, she said that they have been working on equity for eight years. That it has taken different forms to do, to do different focuses and pass. It is involved and they add a different task force or different committee, they are using. And then from that equity, they launched a series of trainings for teachers and students. So that's another part of what that work has been for them. And they are, they are working with Dr. Fetter's from the county schools. She's the chief of equity and access for the big county, and so Southern Indian City, by really takes their partnership with their county, the county schools office, really, they just use those resources really well to do that work. So I'll send, I'll kind of put this in a little condensed version for you guys, but I did reach out.
I really think that this needs to be reminded, maybe the public statements, or if it was within the minutes, that this is not because some member of the board doesn't want to be a part of the equity, it's actually because everyone wants to be a part. But in order for us to really do it very well and to expand it, bring in other people and to do what's necessary, add a But in order for us to really do it well and to expand and bring in other people and, and to, to do what's necessary, add that kind of dialogue and conversation, we, we needed to boot two of the subcommittees. So I hope you all look at us.
Let me add that by having more than two of us on the board, it restricts how the board can operate, or how that committee can operate. So there are a lot more rules and restrictions where it would be a lot more effective to have no more than two of us in the committee. Natalie will say?
Exactly what you were going to say, just reminding the public for those stating that we would have to follow brand clause if we were, uh, going to have more than two board members. And that just restricts us from getting, or the committee getting work done that needs to be done.
And we will be bringing everything back to the board that needs to be voted on. So you all still get to have all the say this, do whatever you have, Jordan.
I just wanted to say thank you to Cindy for, uh, giving that research, talking to some other districts and seeing what they're doing. And the bill as well for attending the trainings and for, yeah, putting all of this together uh, for us. I definitely look forward to what those subcommittees will be and what they'll look like.
Okay, you guys ready to vote? So, I'm calling for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point seven, personnel services. Approval of the personnel page, fiscal impact, budgeted. Senator Cindy?
Second.
Bill, discussion? Will you go ahead and run?
I just wish you a better, more people to hire.
Yeah.
Share the CSBA, the A's concerns, um, boy, that's, uh, that's really, it's a, it's a nationwide issue, uh, that of course, especially across the state. So we need to figure out creative ways to find more people.
It's getting our community hard to make sure, you know, in so many different ways. So anybody who is interested in possibly working for the district, check out a joint. We have a lot of open positions. So go ahead and vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point eight, personnel services approval of provisional internship permit for math teacher Mark Nostias. Effective August ninth, twenty twenty one, fiscal impact none.
Still move?
Bill, sorry, Natalie, discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point nine, personnel services approval of provisional internship permit for elementary teacher Anna Vega Castillo, effective August ninth, twenty twenty one, fiscal impact none.
Still move?
Sorry, Natalie, discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve ten, personnel services approval of one-year plaid waiver for Dallas Bearsport. SBC teacher, effective August ninth, twenty twenty one, fiscal impact none. So dear. Senator Natalie, second. Cindy, discussion?
It was very close.
Yeah, I needed a tiebreaker there. Exactly. All right, let's go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve nine eleven, personnel services approval of memorandum of understanding between California Schools Employee Association and RIN World Unified School District to increase the daily hours of all their professional positions to six hours per day, effective August tenth, twenty twenty one. Three June tenth, twenty twenty two. Fiscal impact, budgeted, restricted, general fund, COVID funds. Senator Cindy?
Second.
Jordan, discussion?
Good, Jenny, I'm sorry to ask this, but just because of the questions that were stated tonight during CSBA that were taught. Just, uh, what, what is that doing? Are we now forcing people to work in war and they want to work?
That's a good question. The answer is no. Uh, thank you. Yeah, it gives them all an option during the six hours. Uh, just about every, every question is it, I figure a hundred two, so I can vote five hours of that.
Thanks, but I just want to make sure.
Okay, ready for the vote? So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Twelve point twelve, special services approval to establish meeting dates for the parent advisory board at parent university for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. Meeting dates are October thirteenth, twenty twenty one, January twelfth, twenty twenty two, and May eleventh, twenty twenty two. Fiscal impact none. Senator Natalie? Second, Cindy, meeting discussion? Let's vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So thirteen point zero, consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything? Okay. So, um, we don't have any other support. Here, so. So I have a motion to, um, ask to go ahead and vote on thirteen point one, thirteen point two, thirteen point twenty one, our consent calendar. Senator Cindy, second. Natalie, is there any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Fourteen, no, skip fourteen point zero. Fifteen point zero, governance team future agenda items planning. Fifteen point one, time allotted for the board trustees to request agenda items for future meetings. There, there. Going ahead to sixteen point zero. Future meeting dates, we have our regular board meeting September ninth, twenty twenty one at five thirty PM. Will be on YouTube and will be here at RIN High School Library. Regular board meeting October twenty first, twenty twenty one at five thirty PM. Will be here at the RIN High School Library. For California State mandate, masks are required in all K H twelve campus, while room doors. Um, you do not need to go to those sessions. So moving ahead to eighteen point zero, adjournment. Make that question to adjourn the meeting at seven forty nine PM. Do you have a second? Sir, I'll tell you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?